Good evening, welcome everybody to the Lahuna City Council meeting on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is now six P M. I will ask you all to please stand for our invocation. Divine presence be with us today as we gather in Lahuna, we pray. Let unity and resilience in our hearts convene. Let us work hard for the good of our community. We confront challenges with courage and might. Guide our council with wisdom and grace. As we strive for progress in this sacred space, let our community be inclusive and just, where opportunities for all will be robust. Bound by a shared purpose, we stand tall, navigating uncertainty will never fail. In this meeting, may our decisions be wise, shaping Lahuna's future, reaching new skies. Bless our endeavors with unity and might as we work together for a brighter Lahuna tonight. Amen. If you'd stay standing for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield. Present.
Velasquez. McIntyre.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochoa.
Here.
Vila.
Here.
Tantoya.
Here.
All right, minutes of previous meeting, we have a motion.
I motion for a couple of minutes from the previous meeting, maybe first.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I asked for the citation for the city's involvement in the For how much a city can put in as far as the expenditures to promote an election, the city attorney said seventy-five dollars, and I asked him for the citation, the citation says fifty dollars for the record. And is somebody tracking that, Rick?
No, neither does.
Huh?
Yeah.
The cost?
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Vila?
Well, I'm empty.
Any other discussion? Now to ask for your votes, and that passes unanimously. Citizen participation, if we have any citizen that would like to come up and talk, you have five minutes, and you may come up to the microphone and state your name and your piece. Are you guys together?
Yes.
Okay, guys come up.
One.
Are you with them tonight?
No.
Oh.
Do you want to wait?
Yes, please.
Oh, my bad.
I thought you see me go to them, that's all right.
Oh, okay.
To this mic right here.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We're just here to mention a very dangerous, very belligerent dog, and a very responsible owner. We've been told that owner lives on Fourth and Lincoln, but we're not entirely sure on that, because the code officer said that they don't know, that they're not sure if the dog lives there or not. But we've seen the dog over there many times, at least four or five times, and he's attacked my friend very viciously on her bike about three weeks ago, Kathy.
Well, it's two and a half weeks ago, two weeks ago last Friday.
Two weeks ago last Friday, and I was attacked the same day, but later that day, later that afternoon. I had no idea that my friend Kathy was attacked, because this happened when I was coming back from Safeway on Third and Colorado, and the dog came up behind me stealthily. I didn't even know the dog was behind me, and he growled and bit my ankle. And the owner, I guess it was the owner, he was across the street over, down from Star Cleaners, and he called the dog two or three times, but the dog didn't mind him. And I'm guessing it was the owner, since the dog minded him. I didn't get a really good look at the owner, because I just was wanting to get out of there. But that was, that's the story that happened with me, was I was attacked coming back from Safeway on Third and Colorado. And just this dog, we found out has attacked other people as well. And we made a police report that following Sunday with the police, and did nothing really come about, and we just really wanted to get the dog out, know it, because we don't want anyone else being hurt. Because some of the people have been hurt by this dog, and we're just concerned about the community.
What was your name, sir?
Oh, sure, I apologize. My name is Randall Chase LaRue.
And what date was this?
This date was April
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Rick, you looking at it?
Yeah. I'm writing that down right now.
And who spotted last Wednesday?
And Kathy spotted him last Wednesday in the alley behind her house, and a friend of hers named Steven Nielsen called the police again, because he saw the dog. And then they saw the dog over by Fourth and Lincoln again when they were leaving. So he called the police about it, too, to make sure the code officer, code enforcement was let to know about it again.
Have you touched base back with the police department after your initial filing?
I did, ma'am. I called them, and I didn't get a response, because she was out of the office. Laura Ranker was the one who gave us the case number, and came out to meet us and talk with us. I tried calling her, but she was out of the office, so I left a message with her, saying that we found out where we think the dog lives, and also that the code enforcement was saying they, I talked with code enforcement that day, it was two days ago. No, it was last Sunday I talked with code enforcement, and they said they're looking for the dog.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you, all of you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so very much, all of, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Kathy.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Kathy Del Rio, and the first time I saw that dog was three weeks ago today, when I took my trash out, and that dog has a white face, white tummy, white feet, reddish brown hair, and he looks like a pit bull, an early aggressive, vicious, dangerous pit bull, and he charged at me, and I got scared, and I ran into the house. And Friday on the twenty-eighth of April, the same day, it was eleven o'clock in the morning, I was coming home from the pier house on my bike, and that dog came at me and charged at me. And I tried to stand still so the dog would leave me alone, but he got at me and nipped at me and grabbed my ankle and bit me and grabbed here and bit me and here and knocked me pretty down, and grabbed my clothes. And I screamed and yelled, and the man with a shirtless man with around here and a beard with a big stick came walking and chased the dog away. And then I got on my bike and headed home, and the dog charged at me again, about attacked me again, just about got away from it. I screamed and yelled. Here comes that same man, right in that yard where I've been informed where the dog lived, and I got in the house immediately. And I didn't know what to do, but we did, Randy and I both called the police and explained to them. And I'm just telling you, that dog's on the loose, and I've been informing the community, if anybody sees a dog of that description, own the loose all over town, roaming the streets, to call the police immediately, because the nice weather is here, we want to get out and do things, and I don't think it's right, the police won't do anything. And then I even went to the D A and made the same report, made it in writing. I went last Thursday, and I took it in writing, and I'm doing everything we can to get something done about that dog, get this taken care of, because I'm even afraid to go out of the house because of that dog. And I don't want anyone in the community to be attacked or assaulted by that dog, and something does need to be done as soon as, immediately, I'll say.
Thank you. We'll look into it. Thank you.
Maybe they can do some more patrols in that area, Rick.
Yeah.
Hi there. My name's Bethany Binder, and I just wanted to say, I was taking, or I was using the brick and tile trail with my dog. He was on a leash, just so we all know. But we were on the trail just a couple of days ago, and I wanted to say thank you to whatever city worker cleaned up all the weeds. I know it's in a working process, and I've seen the part that we've burnt, and the grass is coming back, so it looks beautiful over there, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you for your patience, Nancy.
I'm Nancy Bennett, and I'm here to show you the Stephen A. Hart Award that was given to the Council of Local Governments recently by the State Historic Fund. And we got it, it was People's Choice Award, and we got it for our historic downtown survey, which I don't know if you've had a chance to read or not, but you would be amazed at the amount of information in that survey. The detailed information about the buildings that are downtown makes it so much more interesting to look at them, look at them, you know. So Trevor Harris Singh and Daniel Horton and I went to Denver to pick the award up, and I was on the lane not too long after we got it, and she said I should come show it to you, so here, there it is.
Thank you for going.
Do you want me to pass it around?
Thank you, Nancy.
And I think Betty was just telling me that she needed you to stand right over there while she takes picture of you.
I don't think she was telling you that at all.
Well, there should be another one.
That's okay, but thank you.
Thank you.
It's just.
Thank you.
So where will they put that?
That's a good question.
Where will they put that, Rick?
It's a good question.
I don't know. Where would you guys like to put it? You guys are council, you can tell me to put it everywhere, anywhere.
Do we have a place on the table back here? I don't know where you, where you normally keep them?
At least till June ninth, though.
What's June ninth?
Yes.
What does that have to do with this?
You're gonna show it off at the professed?
It has, because you're the chair of both part places.
No, I'm not. They had, they gave five other awards. Each one of them was handmade for the award, all of them involved fused glass. I mean, I think this is really a special award, and the different colors of glass in this order to represent the different ethnicities of the people that developed, settled and developed Lahuna.
Well, maybe when you're done with the other building, we could put it in there.
Yeah.
That's very nice.
That would be a nice place for it.
It would so perfectly place for it. And then you will need to.
And here's what the, if you want that, too.
Hey.
That's very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy, for all you do for those buildings.
Guaranteed.
Any other citizen participation?
I'm Chad Penner. I just have a question from what I heard earlier in the opening part. What does it mean that we only have fifty or seventy-five dollars for election?
Oh, okay.
Mike.
State Colorado, oh, it's probably been about fifteen, twenty years ago, put limits on cities, counties, that they can promote an election. You know, once you know, like if this board came in, they said, okay, you know, here's an ordinance, we're going to pass a one percent. Right? Well, then I can't, at that point, I cannot go out and start saying, okay, let's get up copies and let's promote it, and let's buy this with city dollars. Can't use your tax dollars, actually.
Okay, so it's not like you have fifty dollars to run a whole election, or?
No, but you know, it's actually up to
It sounded as though, didn't it?
That's only for council.
Yeah, but it's, of course, the city.
It's for what you're trying to promote.
Right. But you know, like having open houses and stuff like that, what came into question was, we had this one deal that showing that, hey, this is all general fund money, and with pennies coming up to it. And Councilman Grewell thought that was a violation.
So it's something, it's money for the council to promote?
Well, that's the max that they could spend taxpayers' dollars on.
Is there a certain issue that's being spent on, or?
Just sales tax.
Yeah, but they haven't done an ordinance yet, once they hit that, you know, which will be coming up. But it's up to actually the citizens to get a committee and run it, and because it's, it's our town, right? And it's just, you know, what we're up against now is, what kind of town do you want? You want a town that has the quality of life stuff in it, or do you want one that we just do basic government services?
So you're saying it's the citizens' job to start a committee for this?
Yes, but, yes. And, you know, and I think the chamber is going to help run this.
Yep.
Yeah.
Last I heard, yep.
Yeah. So, but once we hear it, we're going to be announcing, you know, and
Where people can help out, if they want to.
But they have passing ordinance.
Okay.
You know, and stuff.
All right.
Hey, that was, that was great. Thank you. Because I'm sure there was others that was wondering.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Klein.
Okay, hey, we, since we're, everybody's showing award, awards, we did receive going up from the next level of the Main Street program, and so we're one away, and the state Main Street people think that we could probably be a graduate, which is their top level, by the end of this year.
Wow.
So that's what we'll be working on. Now, what do we get? More technical assistance, and instead of about, like seven, five hundred, I think we get fifteen thousand now. So, you know, for every level we go up, more comes in to help us with our downtown and make it more money. So, yes, that is great. Yep, so two awards right there, man. Way to go, everybody. Okay. Now, you want me to do my comments?
No, you're, Mr. Maloff's
Okay, so you're wanting me to do the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Maloff's not here tonight, so Rick is taking over that.
All right.
Thank you for that other piece of information.
Yeah, man, I was so glad to see that come in today, you know, so we could get it out tonight, because I knew Nancy, I was hoping you were going to be here, so we pigged that on. Okay, ordinance number sixteen forty-six is ordinance to making supplemental appropriations to the general fund for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, where a city line is doctor budget for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, various funds, anticipated expenditures, and other changes that are not otherwise not anticipated at the time of creation of the budget. So there's an additional ten thousand for, to be appropriated for the following expenditures, and that expenditure be for the following, it says general expenses and for an investigation, and that revenue sources be taken out of the city of Lahuna's retained earnings.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
City attorney and I, he called me at the end of the meeting last time we met, and he had a proposal for resolution to try to avoid the cost of this expenditure, and he told me to think about it, and a week later, we talked about it. And I suggested to him that in order to eliminate this cost, which Rick says it'll be pretty devastating to our budget, that we come up with an alternative dispute resolution, and I told him because of the suspect of the investigation's data so far. So, and then he left on vacation, so I don't know what his thought was. He, he got, he never got back to me, so I have to assume that it was zero. But if you guys want to talk about it, and another way we can do that without going to that ten thousand dollar expense, I would make that motion.
I don't understand your statement, Ed. Clarify more for me.
Does anybody else? If you don't, I'll explain it again.
I don't understand.
You don't?
No.
After the meeting, last meeting, Dean suggested that we do some alternative resolution to this whole issue. And I said I would think about it, and next thing I know, he was gone. But the fact of the matter is that I'm thinking about it because of my feelings that are suspect toward the content of the statements by the two Afians, which would be Salazar and Johannes. Does that make it a little bit clearer? Anybody not understand? I'll say it again.
Do you understand, Eli? What are you saying?
Do you?
I think I get it now, yes.
So you're thinking about working out a deal with Dean?
No, with the council and Dean. All he does is propose to you guys, and you guys decide it.
But if you didn't go with whatever he proposed to you, then I would say that we're probably gonna need to do it.
Yeah.
Because then you didn't, you're saying you counter offered with something else, and that wasn't
No, I haven't counter offered anything.
You just were never, he never got back to you because he was on vacation.
He never got back. He, he left town. He said he had to go to Florida.
Yeah, I know, but you told him that you would think about it, and you, you didn't do it. You said something different of what you would go with, than you said no. And he didn't get back to you, so then I think we need to do it.
Yeah, whether you pass this or not, you know, I'll hold back until after Dean gets back, and then they get clarification, see which way to go. So, you know, you could go ahead and pass it or deny, and
So that money could be moved back?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You just don't spend.
Thank you for clarifying that, then, so I would
Say that again, Rick.
Whether you pass it or it fails, you know, I'll talk to Dean when he gets back, you know, we just won't spend the money.
Okay.
Right.
That's fine. I just, I just threw that out for discussion.
That's a great discussion to have, that we should
So it's your statement that you didn't talk to Dean at all after that last meeting we had at last council? Mr. Vila, Mr. Vila, you.
What?
You haven't talked to Ed, I mean, to Dean since then? That's your statement? Okay.
He, he never got back to me. So as far as I'm concerned, it's still open.
So what is he getting back to you for?
Uh, to see the merits of what we proposed.
So you proposed something back to him?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we could probably do this and then talk later.
Yeah, we can do it.
Okay.
That's all the discussion I had.
Any other discussion? I'll ask for your vote. And that's all yeses except for Mr. V, oh, Mrs. Pentway, are you abstaining?
Yeah, sorry.
All yeses except for Mr. Vila's no, and Paul's gone. The moment we've all been waiting for. Patrick and Andrew, if you'd please come up to the mic, or just one?
We'll, we'll split it up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll start out tonight, and then Andrew.
You got, you got five minutes.
Could take a little bit more now.
Is the mic on?
Thank you for the opportunity to present the audit to you tonight, and also want to thank Alisa and her staff for providing us the information that we needed to conduct the audit. You have your packets in front of you. First thing I want to go over is the independent audit report, and that's on page one. It's right after the table of contents. I think it's important that everyone has a clear understanding when we render an unmodified opinion, what that exactly means. In that first paragraph, which states our opinion, the opinion that we stated, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position, and then it goes on to list the funds that we audited of the city of Lahuna as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And then down below, under the auditor's responsibilities, our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from a material misstatement. And the standards go on to define what reasonable assurance is. And it's assurance that is a high level of assurance, but not absolute insurance. So it's not a guarantee that based on the auditing standards that we follow, that there is not a material misstatement that would, that would cause you to alter your conclusion as to the financial position of the city of Lahuna. So what we're here to do is to present this information to you, this information that you can rely on in order for you to make your own assessment of the financial condition of the city of Lahuna. So I'm going to go over the general fund, and then Andrew will come up and talk about the enterprise funds. So if you would please turn to page fifty-five.
I like how we cut through half the book right there.
Yeah. Page fifty-five is the balance sheet for the general fund, so it's a comparative balance sheet. And when we talk about the general fund, it's a governmental fund, so it's different than the enterprise funds that Andrew will be talking about. The general fund does not contain any long-term assets or liabilities. So if you look at the asset section of the general fund, you see that it's mostly cash and accounts receivable. Those receivables typically are collected within sixty days. So your assets are available for current year operating. And then you have your liability section, and then down at the bottom is what we refer to as fund balance, which is your assets less your liabilities. And your fund balance typically in the general fund closely represents your assets. You see the fund balance that you're in is three point two million, and your total assets is three point five. So that's the difference between general fund and enterprise funds, which do include long-term assets and liabilities. So a year in, total assets were three point five million, which was a significant decrease from the prior year. Went from five point three million down to three point, down to three point five million. That's one point seven million dollar decrease. That decrease is primarily in your cash and investments. At the end of two thousand and twenty-one, the general fund had just over four million in cash and investments. At the end of two thousand and twenty-two, it was down to two point two million.
And think where it's at right now. If you don't think we don't need the one percent, what kind of community do we want?
Your liabilities were two hundred and eighty-one thousand a year in, and that's just dependent on accounts payable, timing of when the invoice is received, and those services are rendered, or products received. The unearned revenue, that's grant revenue, that's grant funds that have been received but not spent. So until they're spent, they're recorded as a liability, and then we recognize the review when that expenditure occurs. And then the fund balance, you can see that I mentioned the fund balance is three point two million, and that's broken up between categories. What's restricted for Tabor is three hundred and eighteen thousand. Restricted assets, that's the cash that's restricted. And then signed for subsequent years expenditures, that's the amount that it took to balance your two thousand and twenty-three budget. So when you pass your two thousand and twenty-three budget, expenditures exceed revenues by approximately that much, and you're going to use fund balance to have a balanced budget. So your undersigned in two thousand and twenty-two is zero. So it went from two point four million down to zero. So it's about a, just over a million dollar decrease from the prior year. On the next page is a statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund. Revenues were about nine point five million, so they're comparative to the prior year. There are some categories that increased and decreased. Tax revenue had a slight increase from the prior year. Your sales tax, which is the primary component of your tax revenue, was four point eight million. And then intergovernmental revenues, that's where we record the grant revenues. And as I mentioned, we don't recognize the revenue until that expenditure occurs. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had approximately eight hundred thousand in grant revenue, and two thousand and twenty-two was about two hundred thousand. And that's just dependent on, again, when that expenditure occurs. We don't recognize the revenue based on what's awarded. Expenditures went from nine point two million to ten point five million. So that's an increase of one point three million. And the biggest reason for that, as you're aware, was the wage adjustment that occurred in two thousand and twenty-two. There's a supplemental budget that was passed for one point three million. Another reason for that is just inflation. The cost of everything continues to go up. So the general fund had
Nine percent.
Nine percent, that's, that's a big number. So general fund had revenues or a loss of one million forty-seven thousand. And what's important to realize with the general fund is that your revenues over the years typically stay constant, because you can't increase your revenues unless the boarders approve that. But your expenditures continue to increase. You have cost of living increases, inflation increases, and as you can see, your revenues are not sufficient to cover your expenditures.
And the growth of sales tax does not even meet inflation. Never has, even before the thirty-nine percent.
And that was a big misconception last year, is you bring in all the sales tax money, but everything costs more, so we're not gaining anything.
No, we're still falling behind. And we haven't had a tax increase since nineteen eighty-two. Come on, it's easy math to me.
It is easy math. And the other thing I want to highlight, if the general fund continues on this path, as I, you saw in the other pages, about two point two million in reserves. If you continue on this path, those reserves will be depleted sometime in two thousand and twenty-four, sometime next year, those reserves will be depleted.
And, you know, back on page fifty-five, I don't want this to be lost with anybody. But as you, you know, you look at cash and or equivalents, and you'll see under two thousand and twenty-two, it's zero. But in two thousand and twenty-one, it was three point three two five eight eight seven. Now, you got to remember, if you go down to others, to the investments, you know, we had investments, but what are we doing? We have to take out investments to balance it to zero, but you can't have a negative cash, right? So, but we'll be losing our ability for matching funds for all the funds that are coming out the next five years, because they'll have matching. So if we want to get into some of these federal funds, we got to find money, and that's going to take a rate increase, or a property tax increase, which nobody wants to do anyway, so.
Yep. So that, I mean, that is a concern, but we're looking What we're looking at is the fact that you are using up your cash reserves, and again, if you continue on the same path, those will be completed by next year. You know, it comes down to two things. Either you increase your revenues, and that can only be done if citizens realize the need for that increase in sales tax, or you have to cut expenditures. Each fund has to operate as its own business, has to be self-sufficient. You can't use money from this fund to support another fund. They have to be self-sufficient and support themselves, so it's just something that everybody needs to realize. That's all I have on the general fund. Is there any questions before Andrew talks about the enterprise funds?
Barring a sales tax increase or property tax increase, what other ways would we?
You have to cut expenditures. That's the only thing that you can do, that's your only option.
Drastically, right?
Yeah. Because if it gets to the point where you're in this position a couple of years from now, then we have to issue what's called a delay concern in our audit report, and you don't want that.
I just wanted you to say.
That's what we're in a radio, right?
Tell what we're doing.
Yeah, mobility, but get grants.
No grants, no nothing.
Yeah, you know, really.
Takes you out of the game.
Thank you.
And hopefully you don't start off with, that was the good news.
I'll be going up and down with that. Like Patrick said, I'm going to be looking at the enterprise funds, and just like he said, the enterprise funds need to be viewed as their own separate entity as well. So we're going to begin on page 76. So if you turn to page 76, we're going to start with the electric fund balance sheet. Now, also like Patrick said, the enterprise funds, they operate under full accrual, which means the enterprise funds will have long-term assets and the long-term liabilities recorded. So on this, on balance sheet for the electric utility fund, you're going to see that you're going to have fixed assets and you're going to have the long-term debt. So the electric fund had total assets of 11,195,000. That's 324,000 more than the prior year, right about 3%. That's mainly due to the influx or the increase in the cash flows. If you look up at the top there, your cash and equivalents as well as investments both increased from the prior year. Your investments increased by almost 500,000, or just over 500,000.
This, the year before this fund was losing money, and the utility board stabilized the ECA, the electric cost adjustment, and it worked. It worked.
So one thing you will notice as we go through this, and Rick's right, the electric fund was able to absorb some of those increases as far as inflation and the salary increases. The electric fund was able to absorb those a little bit better than the water, sewer, and sanitation, and we'll see those as we go through this right now. The total liabilities, like I said, was 1.1 million, and it's right there in the middle of the bottom, towards the bottom of the page there. That increase is due to the increase in the ARPA, so your accounts payable did increase from the prior year. That gives you a total net position, just like Patrick said, fund balance. Net position is what you use for enterprise, so there's a little terminology difference, but it means the same. Your net position was 10 million, which is an increase of 221,000. So on the next page, here we'll see the current or the 2022 activity. So this is your statement of revenues and expenses. Operating revenues was 11,500,000, so that's up 98,000 from the prior year, which is due to a slight increase in average cost that was charged. The operating expenses was 11.5 million as well, and that's an increase of about 3%. Big reason for that increase, which is approximately 360,000, in the total operating expenses, is just like Patrick said, it's the inflation as well as salaries. So salaries increased 103,000, and the benefits that is tagged with the salaries increased by 95,000, so it's almost a $200,000 increase there. And then ARPA, their cost increased by 100,000 as well. And when you throw in depreciation expense for 72,000, that makes up pretty much that $360,000 increase. That gives you an operating income of 15,000, so it was, the electric fund was able to have an operating income, meaning the operating revenues covered the expenses plus it funded depreciation. Your non-operating revenues was 205,000, which gives you a change in net position of 221,000 now. So the next page, on page 78, your cash flow, we're not going to go into that in too much detail, but it does show you where your money is coming in and going out. We're actually going to now turn to the water fund, because I want to talk a little bit more about the water fund on page 80. Page 80 is the balance sheet for the water fund. One thing you're going to notice is that very first line, the cash in the equivalence there was zero. The water fund was, in essence, borrowing money from other funds to pay bills, so we have a due-to, due-from that was recorded. And you'll see that due-to other funds there towards the middle of the page, and that's exactly what that is. So the water fund had a negative pooled cash balance, and we had to record that as a due-to other fund there. The concerning thing there is that if there's not changes made, especially in the rates, you're going to run into that negative cash deficit continually getting bigger. And then as well as your net position at the bottom continually getting bigger as far as the deficit, or was unrestricted, I should say. I will go towards the middle of the page here, let's look at your total assets.
And now, you know, where did we borrow the money from? Internal services, you know, mortgage pool, computers, and warehouse, purchasing. And because, you know, we could cash flow it out of there better, but we've got to get that corrected so we can pay it back, leave like the electric.
Did you borrow it or take it, Rick?
We bought, we can't take it, Ed.
Got to pay it back?
Got to pay it back.
It needs to be paid back. That's why it's recorded there as a due-to other funds. If it can't be recorded, it can't be paid back within a year, it'll be recorded as a borrowing and move over into a long-term position. So it is being shown as a due-from other funds in the internal service or the city service fund right now, and they equal each other. So until that money gets paid back from the one fund to that fund, it's going to be shown there as a liability.
You can't take it, Ed, you have to pay it back. Like you said, each one has to run independently.
How do you pay it back?
The water fund needs to make payments to internal services.
Right now, we're selling for less than over producing.
I need to increase that rate.
That would be, that'd solve, that'd be one way to solve the issue, correct? So your total assets there is 14 million. That increase from the prior year is a little bit deceiving, and I do want to explain that a little bit as well, because it increased 1.5 million. And one of the big reasons for that is that you received some coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. It's that ARPA money that you received. It was used for the South Booster Station, and right now, you'll see that your land, water, system, and equipment, which is your fixed assets, that increased quite a bit. And you're also going to see that restricted cash increased. The restricted cash is that money that I just mentioned, the coronavirus state, local fiscal recovery funds, and it has to be used for that South Booster Station. And I believe it's probably already been spent, correct? I mean, have you, most of it probably?
We're going to have it done by the end of next month, and so it'll all go back to negative again.
So as of 12/31, it was a high balance just because it wasn't spent yet. There was about 400,000 in the payable that was going to be paid. There was work done on the South Booster Station that was done in 2022 that didn't get paid out until '23, and then the rest of the work was done in '23.
That's by the high school, right?
Yep, she, up there about 3 million gallon tank.
And if you look at your total liabilities, it's 2.5 million, which is an increase of 750,000 from the prior year. And if you go towards the top there, the current liabilities, the unearned revenue, that's 638, that's the unspent portion. So that's what we're referring to as well, that's going to be spent on the South Booster Station. The due-to other funds, we already talked about, and that's the internal service fund. The total net position then in the water fund was 11,660,000. So on the next page, we'll look at the current year activity or the 2022 activities. Total operating revenues, 2.9 million, this is a decrease of 51,000, mainly due to the decrease in consumption. Consumption was down probably approximately 3.5%. Your total operating expenses were 3.2, so that's an increase of almost 300,000, and that gives you that operating loss of 288,000. So right now, if you were to look at the operating revenues over the operating expenses, you're not able to fund depreciation expense, which means you're not setting those funds aside to help pay for those assets when they need to be replaced.
And they need to be replaced right now.
So if that's the, if you're not able to set aside that money, then you're not able to, you're going to have to find alternative ways to fund those assets whenever they need to be replaced. Your non-operating revenues was 1,051,000, and the big reason for that is the grant income, and that is, once again, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds that were received, which then gives you income before capital contributions of 762,000. And then your water tap fees was 77,000, which gives you a change in net position of 840,000. So that change in net position is 840,000. However, I do kind of want to break it down just a little bit, because if you tap back out the grant money that was received, it actually was a loss then of 208,000. And like I mentioned on the earlier, that money is, that grant income is going to be spent on the South Booster, and it's not going to be used for operations. So that's the water fund. Are there any questions on the water fund before we jump to the sewer fund? So the sewer fund's next, and that's on page 84. So we're looking at page 84 now, which is your balance sheet for the sewer utility fund. Total assets, 22 million, that's a decrease of approximately 740,000 from the prior year. A big reason for that is the increase in the depreciation expense, as well as there was just a decrease in your cash, and I will highlight that just a little bit on the next page. Your total liabilities was 14 million, that decreased from the prior year, and that is due to the payments on the notes that were made. So as you make payments on your notes, that takes cash, but it does decrease your liabilities. Your net position was 7,440,000 now. On the next page, page 85, we'll look at the statement of revenues and expenses. Your charges for services was about the same as last year, which is 2.4 million. Your total operating expenses, however, increased 264,000. Once again, it's mainly due to that increase in salaries, which increased 121,000, and the benefits was 41,000. So that was 160,000 of the 260,000 increase in expenses. You also have then an increase in your sludge disposal. The amount that was spent on that increased 78,000. So just normal operating expenses, once again, increased. That, you do have an operating income of 171,000, but it is trending down due to the increases in all the other costs. So we are seeing a smaller operating income over the years. Your non-operating revenues and expenses then was a decrease of 216,000, and that is due to the interest expense paid on the three notes. You then have a change in net position of a negative change of 40,800. Any questions on the sewer fund?
You know, on the sewer fund, you know, when I was watching over the years after the RO and, you know, we didn't raise rates, and it's not the current utility board's view. You know, that was a decision by the utility board 20 odd years ago. And, you know, they thought we had too much money in the bank. That's what you get when you don't do your rate increases all along. You know, you come up to it, and then you've got to do big ones. And I wish that, wish we would have done that. But, you know, nobody can blame the current utility board or anything, but this fund is actually, to me, is going down the tubes faster than the water did when we had all that, because it took some years to get there.
Yes, you're not wrong. The trend, and that's what we'll go over later, is the trend analysis does show that it is decreasing, and it is kind of following that path that the water fund was following. So in other words, the cash balance is decreasing, even though you're showing sometimes an operating revenue, you're still having that negative cash balance to pay for things. One thing I also want to highlight on these, and we'll go in more detail tomorrow, and even on Thursday if needed, but you do have loan covenants with CWR PDA. Part of that is that you need to be able to fund 110% of your debt to service, which is your payments to them. And what it does is it takes your total operating expenses, it backs out depreciation, and then it adds 110% of your debt service, what you're going to be paying them. And then it looks at your revenues. Do you have the revenues to cover that? In 2022, you were out of compliance in both the sewer fund and the water fund. The revenues were not able to cover that expenses plus 110% of the debt service. And when we looked at it, just to kind of give everybody an idea, if your revenues and expenses stayed the same in 2023, without a rate increase, you're going to be out of compliance again in the sewer and the water fund. So now we know that things can change. Your expenses are not going to be the same from '22 to '23, nor is your revenues. But if you were to look at it and you follow that same trend, without that rate increase, then you are going to be out of compliance again. And CWR PDA will definitely send you a letter, like the state auditor calls it, a love letter to you guys, explaining what is wrong and what you need to do. So with that, we'll go to the sanitation, or we'll go to, yeah, the sanitation fund, which is on page 88. So on page 88, this is your sanitation utility fund or the garbage fund, and it's the balance sheet. Total assets was 1.8, which is a decrease, and it's mainly due to the decrease in cash flow again because of the current year operations, as well as depreciation expense. Now, if you look at your total liabilities, that increased 189,000. A big reason for that increase, it does relate to Oakley. The post-close, the closure and post-closure liability that was recognized for Oakley in 2022 was a lot higher, even than what we would like have seen. When we did the audit for that, there was, the state didn't approve Oakley Site 1. So when they didn't approve it, that liability still has to be recorded. So once the state approves that, then you should see a significant decrease in the liability that you see right there under current portion landfill cost, as well as the accrued closure and post-closure cost.
Let me mention something real quick. It had nothing to do with Oakley. They submitted all the reports to the state, the state is just dragging their feet on getting approval process done, so it has nothing to do with what Oakley's done.
Yeah, every state organization I'm dealing with has new staffing, and they're just, they don't know yet.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, that's good to mention. So, yeah, the paperwork has all been filed, and it's our understanding that they thought this was going to be approved a long time ago. And when we talked to him last, he emailed him again, and they emailed him again, and they're trying to push him to get that approved.
Do you have any suspicion what the reason for that might be?
Understaffed or staff changes. So. On the next page, page 89, this is your statement of revenues and expenses. This is another fund that needs to be monitored. Like I said, the electric fund was able to absorb those increases a little better, the sanitation fund was not. Total operating revenues was 995, total operating expenses is 1,155. So you do have that operating loss of 159,787 there in the middle. So one thing to keep in mind is keep track of what rates have been changed in the sanitation, which I believe some have already. Is that correct?
Just 20 yard and 40 foot.
Okay, so a few of them have. You do have interest income there of 18,000, so the income before the special item, and that special item is the change in the liability. We record it down there, so it doesn't.
For the post-closure.
Yes, for the closure and post-closure. We record it down there, so you guys have an accurate picture of the current year operations up above, and then that closure and post-closure change gets recorded down there. And just as I said, it was a big decrease this year, it could be a big increase if it gets approved by the state in 2023. Questions on the sanitation fund? The last fund that we'll look at real quick is the property management fund. And this is an enterprise fund as well. It operates a little bit differently, but it is an enterprise fund. You have total assets of 13 million, which is a decrease of 1.1 million. One of the big reasons for that decrease, there's a governmental standard that we have to follow, and what happened is that the city adopted that standard in 2022. And what that does is that it says, any asset that is leased, even by the city, that is leased for longer than a year, has to be recorded as a lease receivable. And then on the opposite side, you record a deferred inflow of resource. And what it is, it's pretty much giving the entity that is leasing it the right to use that asset. And so in 2022, that was implemented, 2021 was restated. And so that is right there in the middle, towards the top, the lease receivables for 1.8 million. It did decrease from the prior year, which was 2.5, and that strictly relates to that new GASP that was implemented. You do have total assets, or you do then have total liabilities of the 1. You do have total assets or you, you do then have total liabilities of the 1.6 million. That's a decrease of 160,000. The main reason there is that there are some unearned lease revenues and that gets recognized over the life of the asset. And so it gets pretty much amortized over the life of the asset and that's with Lewis Bolt, Reach Air and Deboard. And so we recognize that revenue with the life of the leased asset. Deferred inflow of resources, like I mentioned, that correlates with the lease receivable up above. So those two kind of go hand in hand. Total net position was 9.1, which is a $391,000 decrease. So on the next page, we'll see that $391,000 decrease. So on page 93, you did have rent of 1.1 million, total operating expenses of 1.4, which gives you that operating loss of 333,000. One of the reasons for that loss is that you did have an increase in salaries and benefits and then there was just an increase in maintenance as well. And so the maintenance kind of is, goes in line with the increase in inflation, the increase in maintenance as well. You did have non-operating revenues or expenses this year of 49,000 and that's the loss on the sale of some assets. There was the core building that was sold, 801 Third Street and 901 West Third Street were all sold. You do have income or a loss before other financing sources of 383. There was other financing sources, which are your transfers for 7,600 transferred out. That gives you the change in net position of the 391,000. Any questions on property management or even on any of the enterprise funds?
Did you say that 49,918 was a result of a loss on the sale of 901?
No, the actual, the gain-loss on the sale of the asset was a negative, a loss of 145,000.
On?
On those three buildings.
See, we, Southeast bought the building over on Third Street and we had a long-term, but they don't pay well, you know, with advent of Valleywide taking over and stuff like that. They wanted to just pay off their debt so we didn't give all the cash or nothing. When you set up long-term deals and they want to cut them off early.
Oh, that's early pay then.
Early pay, yeah.
And then finally, just to kind of wrap things up, we'll look at that, that schedule I handed out right before the meeting. We'll just kind of real briefly go over that. This kind of summarizes everything that we just discussed.
Did everybody get one?
So on this, the, I'm going to look at the electric fund, the water fund and the sewer and sanitation funds. The ratios I kind of want to highlight here in the electric fund is the operating margin ratio. Here you can kind of see that it's been negative and then in 2022 it was zero. That's not, that's not where you want to be. It could be worse. So that's where I said it was able to absorb it, but it's still not, it's not putting away as much into reserves as it could be. The water fund, however, the operating margin ratio is negative 10 cents and the net position ratio is 1.18. On the margin ratio, I do have the explanations down below. I'll just kind of real briefly mention, the margin ratio indicates the amount added to reserves for every dollar generated. So in this case, you're not adding anything to your reserves on the operating side. The sewer fund, the three ratios there that you should look at is the operating reserve ratio for months. In other words, right now there's not enough in the reserves to cover your operations and the operating ratio reserve, once again, if you look down below, just because that, it's nice to have that later on if you're looking at this. The operating reserve ratio indicates the reserve to cover future expenditures and what that is, it's the unrestricted net position divided by the operating expenses. So in other words, there is no unrestricted net position available. It's all tied up into fixed assets.
Sewer fund, you know, if you took out that, the 1.6 of that we could receive of Varpa phones for pumps, that'd be a negative instead of a 1.08.
Yes, it would.
It'd be a 0.97 or 9, no, 92.
Yes, it would be less than that.
Yeah.
It'd be below the, and it'd be that negative trend would be showing right there. Any other questions on this?
Thank you. Martin?
Yes?
You know, and this is why it was so important that we had them do this before we did our rate increases on utility board so we can get a really clear picture. Rick mentioned that, you know, this utility board wasn't at fault, they should have raised the rates 20 years ago. Well, if we would have raised the sales tax increase in 2015, we also wouldn't be in this situation. And now if they all get hit at the same time, that's tough for the community to have to absorb that all at once. So you, hopefully all of you watching see what a tough, tough situation we're in right Moving on to committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports? I think all our meetings got moved back to the last part of the month, so.
Rick, you're up.
Okay. Okay, so we're down to, like, let's take Brick and Tile Park. Got everything in and down to one gazebo. But then at Tenth and Carson, we have a brick, brick manhole that is falling, fallen in and we have one on order and it should be, they should have showed up today. As soon as they get that, we will be tearing into that intersection and repairing it. And it's a big one, you know, but hey, it was probably put in during your 50s, 1950s, had a great life, you know, being brick and stuff. But we're going to start running into those. You know, let's just hope it ain't our big storm sewer archway.
On the brick and tile one, is anyone devoting that right now?
No, it's still a construction site. Now, with Tenth and Carson happening, I'm looking at maybe putting just a little fence up around the construction area. I talked to the mayor about this today and, you know, and then open up the rest of the park until we can get time to get in there and stuff. But we only have one crew doing it all. Bathrooms are done except for some electrical work and the plumbing on it. Today, CDOT sent off saying, okay, put these last two items in your RFP and send it back again, you know, which we didn't play that game with them. They did make it a Davis Bacon project, which that cost just went up 30%. So now I'm getting scared about the numbers. You know, it's just been one thing after another, but we'll, we'll work it. Okay. As soon as I can get some asphalt, we're going to just stop everything and go to asphalt because we've got pop-outs everywhere. But there's some people that were moving into town and they told me we had the best roads in America after they went through and they were written town they came in by the roads and they're going to move to La Junta. Yeah. And I was like, okay, well, boys still.
Haven't been on Facebook in a while, huh?
I just wonder where they came from.
Rocky Ford?
Yeah. So we're still working on the rate study. I thought you guys did a great job. Thank you very much. And we're having an open house at the library, May 24th, from 10 to 12, showcasing their services. Please show up. Wildland fire season is here. Let's be careful. And I saw that we had to go out on a couple fires today and they had the wildland fire stop. Just because we got that moisture doesn't mean it doesn't ride right back out, folks. You know, let's, let's be careful. And if you're going to start a fire, go talk to Fire Chief. Pool opens June 1st. Soccer is going. We're still in level one, water restrictions. We'll be making a recommendation to City Council, R2 Utility Board to try to make that permanent. That's just the way it should be now, especially with the way we all know what the water situation in the United States is. Electric crews, they're finishing up putting in security lights at the Brick and Tile Park and the supply chains are increasingly complex and lead times continue to be unpredictable at best and typically longer than expected. We are continuing to see logistic costs on the rise, but thankfully most items are available. But it takes you a year and a half to get them. We had an Audi and electric Audi and it was the Senfe. Now, Senfe operates at a different, than ours, voltage. Thank you. And we're 13-8, they're 2,400, I believe. And so they have to have a different type of transformer. This transformer that we put in don't hold. Well, we're going to have to try to find one because when we ordered the replacement to have on stock, we won't be here until January 2025.
Oh, wow.
Every time you see a disaster down south or these fires in California and you think about the amount of people they have, just remember, they take all the stock and they're driving up the prices. So, yeah. And last but not least is I am really getting a lot of complaints on people parking on the sidewalks and blocking driveways. Be respectful. Don't do it. I'm telling the police, tick it. You know, if you're parking across the street the wrong way, you're going to get a ticket. You know, be safe. You know, you may think, oh, this is convenient for you being on the opposite side of the street, but when you, I watch you pull out and I see that you can't see the car behind you, give me a break, get on the right side of the street and don't block the sidewalks or the driveways. That's against the law.
That yard.
Gamepost parking in front yard. You know, unless it's, you know, concrete and coming up or gravelled or something. Yes, a designated. Not pull in through it and then come across your front door.
Mr. Penner?
Do I need to come up there?
Yeah.
Need to exercise that.
Speaking of things we are and aren't allowed to do, the tent over by Boss Hogs for a month. That's ridiculous.
That's on CDOT and that's, yeah, that's on CDOT property.
You look on the assessor's site and it's City of Lahuna County, City of Lahuna County.
Not there.
I spoke with both agencies, the sheriff's office and.
I know that's good.
And the police department.
I had to get permissioned back in, when, 2006, pile of snow on it.
And neither one of them knew who it was and the sheriff's department said they called CDOT and they didn't know. So that's, I guess I'm going to move down there and live tax-free.
Let me get, let me see about that.
I get hot. People come into Lahuna, you better not let that stuff.
Guaranteed.
There was a sheriff down there and they got him out of there.
That was after I called.
Excuse me?
That was after I called.
And you know, I go down that street every day and I honestly didn't see it until the sheriff's there, I was like, what's he looking at? And then I saw that tent and wow.
Yeah, it's.
So thank you for reporting that.
I mean, it bothered me the first time I saw it and I figured somebody else would get to and after three weeks, the police department did say they had a bunch of calls, but I'm just surprised it took that long for either department, sheriff's or city.
Man, I know I've looked that property up and.
Thank you for turning that in because they did get that done that day.
Thanks, Sheriff.
And you're right, we need to keep on top of that.
Police Department and Sheriff's Department for going out there.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
So on the pool, are we going to have night swimming?
Nope.
No?
No family parties or nothing. It costs money.
Zero questions yet?
Yep.
I got a citizen who wants to donate a bench for that Brick and Tile Park. You want to look at it or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I wonder if they just went and buy one of the benches we bought.
No, they, they're close by, that's why they thought they could offer one.
Close by.
They live within a block of that area.
So it's one of their own?
Yeah.
Oh, it's one of their own?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look at it.
Okay.
Yeah. Give, give me their number or name and I'll go contact them.
Gino Chaparo.
Oh, Gino, okay.
Any other questions for Rick?
Yeah, the, what's the status on the ducks? Lady reported last meeting. Did we?
I didn't get one phone call and I was kind of, I thought for sure by what happened last time, that somebody would come forward, but nothing, crickets.
So we got to wait for somebody to come through or what?
I do not know the status of that, truthfully. You know, I don't know if the lady took it up to Denver or what the heck.
I have a little bit of an update. So, like, I've been talking with Brock about these ducks all the time. The last he has is, you know, the signs are ordered, they've been monitoring the park more often. Todd is also working on it too, but unless someone that actually saw the ducks being removed comes forward, there's nothing they can do on that front. So it's back to whoever did see that, you know, it's one thing to, to post it on, on there, but you guys got to tell the authorities what you saw and go from there.
So if they do come forward and say that they did see this lady, then we can move forward with sanitation.
Are we able to get other ducks?
Yes, actually, that's something that was offered by the Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yeah. So we're looking at, you know, how do you do that and stuff? Because those others were just, these that came.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but they loved their homes.
And they loved their homes and they stayed for a decade, yeah.
So yes, we can look at doing more, but the more important thing was we were trying to get those ducks back because they were, they were important to the community.
Yep.
Mayor, I have a question for Rick. So when we were talking about the pool before and we were thinking we could increase the dollar amount for the night pool rentals, we're actually going to end up losing all of the money that we would have made on that?
I'm sorry, I was thinking about family. The night ones where we rent it, yeah, we did keep those.
Oh.
Is that what you're talking about or are you talking about family?
No, she's talking about night swim, I think.
Yeah, you're talking about family night and stuff, yeah. No, but we do the pool rental.
Same price.
We could, no, they.
It would go up.
Except by 50 bucks.
So it did, that way it did go up.
There are parties.
There are parties, they're all booked.
Oh.
We got to wait unless, get something back.
But there's no night swims, but they can rent it at night for parties.
Yes.
Damon said.
I'll talk at the same time.
What'd you say, Damon? My belief, my understanding is that they didn't do an increase on the parties. They're still continuing the parties, but they did not do an increase.
They didn't do an increase?
They didn't catch that in time. There's increases on, on the cost of the daily swim and those other things, but they did not catch the increase on the parties.
Can you double check that, Rick?
We got to get why they do all the parties.
Rick? Rick, you'll double check that?
Yeah. We used to have our own. City council. Oh, city council.
Any other questions for Rick?
City employees.
I do just want to add that the Colorado Rockies organization will be here Friday. We have a Zoom with them set up tomorrow, me and Brock. They're going to be giving a clinic for our children here in La Junta. They are a little bit late on, on getting us all their details, so we still don't know where it's going to be. It's up to them how they want to facilitate it. We're pushing for Potter because you have two fields back to back. We don't know if they'll need 22nd or how they're going to do that. They seem to have a lot of people already signing up, so that's also going to play a role into how that works. There was people saying, why are you doing this on the same day as there's another school event? We didn't know that at the time. No one told us at the time and it's up to the Rockies, not, not up to us. So when we were doing dates way back when, that's the date we picked it and so we apologize for that, that they have to make a decision, but you know.
Is it going to be free?
A good problem to have.
Yes, free, all free. And they're going to be giving out stuff from, from the Rockies as well, too.
Yeah, so as soon as we find out, we'll put it up on our Facebook and get it out and Tico News and radio station.
And one more, I was given the opportunity to go and present awards to the Valley's kids at the Center for American Values in Pueblo. Lisa was there as well, too. It was at Center for American Values where they have all the Medal of Honor recipients and their portraits and there was a lot of kids from Fowler, Swink, Los Anamis and of course La Junta that received awards. It was really a great day. It was really a great day, about four hours worth of, you know, just recognition and celebrating our youth in the valley. So it was an honor to do that.
All right, governing body comments. Anybody comments?
I go.
Go ahead.
Nobody else has one. Thank you, Urban Renewal, for giving that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Southern Lumber to come into town. That's a good investment. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
No.
All right, I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to talk about you, Mr. Vila, so I'm going to ask that you wait until I'm finished before you respond. Okay? Full disclosure, Mr. Vila is a relative to my wife through marriage. I've known Mr. Vila a very long time. He's lived across the street from my aunt, and I respect Mr. Vila. I think he is a great member of this community. He's a city councilman, a veteran. He, I, I believe he truly does care about this city. We don't always agree on things. And it, it baffles me that he says that he did not talk to Dean, because someone is, is not telling me accurate information. I received a call last Tuesday from Dean saying he needed to talk to me about a proposal from Mr. Vila. And that proposal was Mrs. Salazar was to recant her story, or the, there would be damning information released about the mayor from Ed. And I don't understand that. I'm not involved in this situation at all, other than this report was made to me, okay? I do not have anything to do with what Mr. Vila did. I'm trying to keep myself out of it, that way I can be given the situation and make my decision off of that. I've told Mr. Vila this. He says, you know, you're not talking to me. I told him I talked about anything except for that situation. I'm not going to be threatened with things that I may or may not have done. I'm an honest man. I'm a family man, and I care about this community, and I run a business. I can't have these kinds of things being put out there like that. Okay, I do this because I want to help Lahana grow. At one point, I actually supported Mr. Vila to be mayor many years ago, okay? But I'm not going to be threatened with information being held over me or things like that. That's, that's not how I operate. We're all adults here. And if you're saying that you didn't talk to Mr. Maloff about that, someone, someone's miscommunicating the information. But that's not how we do business here. We're adults, we, we have, we have a ton of problems that we have to do right now, a ton of problems that we have to work on. And instead, we always have to deal with things like this. And nine times out of ten, they're coming from Mr. Vila. And it frustrates me, because when I get on Facebook or when I see the news coming to town, it's for nonsense. It's not for us doing something good. It's not for us doing the work that we were elected to do. And, and that bothers me. So I'll let you respond, but, but that's my statement on it.
Well, your comment that we had discussed the, the woman who made that accusation against me to recant, no. She just has to understand human behavior, period. And I'm not going to give a whole bunch of information, because this, all of this is still pending. Also, the mayor, you're, you're good, you're well-intended. As I said, when I asked you to support me for mayor, and you said, I'm going to run. I quickly pulled out a hundred bucks and said, here, I'm going to back you up, because I wanted youth on this committee, this council. And we got it. So that's what I really like about it, and the things I bring up, you know, it's not always just the city, it's the citizens, too. I was elected by the citizens to do favor for the citizens without taking it deeply out of their pockets. And I'll have more to say on that later, but as far as the mayor not speaking to me, he won't even look at me, and it's all right here, period. I says, why, what, who, when, why? Nothing. Sees me walking, always with a, as they say in the Spanish community, or the Mexican community, with a jeta. And that's no good. We got to get along. Matter of fact, it has even spilled out into the administration. Rick's a good guy. No matter what anybody does to him, he'll talk to you. But these other people that work in administration ignore me. But I'll talk about that maybe later.
But that doesn't matter.
I'm speaking to you, mind?
Yes, I do mind.
Well, we'll take the floor.
Yes, because what he's trying to say is that we want to move past this and not mudsling different things towards each other to get this accomplished. There's so much more we have to do.
I got eight years over your one year.
Yes, I know you have that, and you keep saying it's for the youth, for the youth and step down.
I didn't say for the youth, I said for the citizens.
Yes, we're the citizens who are young and wanting to make a better Lahana.
That's right. But you're going to have input from the old guard. You're going to have input from the old guard, because I'm not saying I'm right all the time.
I'm not saying.
I'm just saying, this is how I feel. I was elected by the people, not by the council.
Yes.
And I feel strongly about that. Joe, you're still my nephew, I still love you. I still got plenty of positive things, because you know, when you were elected, I told you, this is just the stepping stone into your, maybe a next state representative role or whatever, but we'll see.
But he just said that four years ago, he supported you for the same thing.
Was it four, it was six?
Well, he supported you.
Well, I did too.
Yes.
And that's what got him through.
But this is a bunch of mudslinging, and it needs to stop.
Well, I didn't start it.
So are you denying that you talked to Mr. Maloff about that?
No, I, I'm not denying that I talked to him, because I was leaving, and he called me over there. He initiated it. He says, hey, we got to do something different on this. And he, I'm not going to say what he said, but I didn't like it. And then when we and I, and he and I talked, oh, he was in a hurry, he's got to go to Florida. And I says, why the rush? He goes, oh, you know, the wife, they always want to go right now, and that's the last I heard of him.
He's entitled to his vacation.
Well, yeah. I'm not complaining about that.
I know, but.
But don't say that you're going to do something and then go out of state.
I don't know about that. All I know is the phone call I got on Tuesday, and I was upset. I talked to Rick about it, and I, I thought about filing a complaint against you, Mr. Vila. That's borderline blackmail and extortion, and I did not want to do that. I wanted to bring that up to you here and let you have an answer for that. I, I don't appreciate it. I, I have a lot in this community, and I won't be, you know, threatened like that.
I got, I got just as much as you or more.
So, but let me, let me get, so you talked to Dean here, but you didn't talk to him any other time afterwards?
Yes, he called me.
Oh, okay.
After I, after I told him what I wanted.
Gotcha.
And he never got back to me.
That was to understand human behavior?
What?
What was it, to understand, wanted them to understand the human behavior?
Her perception of what my activity was during the time I was back there is improper. It's not correct. Because you know yourself, anytime you're here in a conversation with somebody, and somebody walks by, you're distracted like that, but just momentarily. Well, she took it out of context, apparently, whoops, I'm giving a trump card. Forget it. But hey, you know, Joe, let's shake hands, let's talk, and don't leave me out of the loop, because everybody went to that, I mean, nobody went to that Arc Valley conduit meeting, except me. You know why I went? Because nobody told me not to go. Everybody else knew to go. That's what you told me.
Ed, you knew that, the utility board had voted no on that.
On the conduit?
Why would you go, you know?
Maybe they had something different to do.
But you put him for a travel rebate on it for fifty-eight bucks.
So?
Do you think that's right? When, when these guys, they don't go, then.
When I, did I bring back what I, what I was given over there? Did I give you something to hand out, to tell you about the projects?
So, you know.
Did I do it? Yes.
So it's up to council, whether you guys want to reimburse him the fifty-eight.
No, it ain't, it's up to you.
No, it actually says authorized by, but I've never gotten one, except for like on CML, Action 22 or places, but I like what we did.
I'm the cheapest guy there is for, it comes to expenses, and you know that.
All right, with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming up.